Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, April 13th, meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. And would everyone please join me in the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this is the first time I have said this in a very long time. Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Quigley.
Present.
Trustee Luizy.
Present.
Trustee Alfasi.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am here tonight. Thank you. We note the absence of Deputy Mayor Tom Giordano. He called me about an hour ago. He is stuck in Pennsylvania, and he wishes certainly could be here. So, we have one presentation tonight, and I'm going to ask Mr. Frank DiMarco to come on up and talk to us about the ever-interesting 2015 annual MS4 stormwater report for the New York State DEC. Thank you, Frank.
Testing, testing.
There we go.
Welcome, welcome. Back by popular demand, I'm here to speak about my MS4 application. You know, I'm forever being asked where roof water goes, rainwater, toilet water, laundry water, kitchen water, water meaning wastewater. But one thing is for sure, and everything must, everybody must realize, that rainwater and wastewater should never meet. Those are two separate lines in our infrastructure that serve two different purposes. Wastewater, which is obviously toilets, kitchen sink, laundry water, basins in your home, travel probably through your basement out into the sewer lines that are in roads. These lines are taken to our Yonkers Sewer Treatment Plant, which is on the west side along the Hudson River. They purified this wastewater to almost drinking standards, 99.9 percent. Once this wastewater is purified, it's then released into the Hudson River, where it's safe for everyone. And then we have stormwater. Stormwater is roof rainwater. It's water that's collected in the street during rainy conditions along the curbside. There's big catch basins that are there to collect our rainwater in the village of Tuckahoe. We have 356 catch basins in the village of Tuckahoe. These catch basins travel through our infrastructure, again, in separate lines, and they travel to the nearest waterway, which is the Bronx River for us here in Tuckahoe. There are several, if you ever take the path along the Bronx River, you'll notice enormous pipes that never seem to have anything in them, but they sit along the Bronx River. But those are our outfalls, which are these enormous pipes, and they carry our stormwater. This stormwater is inspected by me twice a year for any type of illicit discharge. And what illicit discharge is, is that anything that might be dangerous or contaminant that's emptied into these catch basins that's in the street will ultimately end up in the river and harm our waterways. So, this takes me to our MS4 application. So, that's what our MS4 application is. It's an, it's an application with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. And what the, and, uh, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation wants to make sure is that we're doing everything we can to protect our waterways, because from the catch basins to the Bronx River, this water is not purified. It just takes its natural route. So, they want to make sure that we maintain, we protect, educate, and do the best we can to make sure that they're safe for everyone. You know, the catch basins that we have throughout the village have these emblems. And what these emblems simply do is educate everyone, telling them that that does go, anything that empties into that catch basin does go to our waterway. There's also a number on each of these emblems, and we've been very fortunate enough to GPS every one of these catch basins, tell us where they are, what condition they are in, do they need to be maintained, and most importantly, they're color-coded on our website to tell us exactly which outfall pipe that catch basin goes to. So, with all this extensive work, you know, we're very lucky to have all this information at hand. There were a couple of instances where we had illicit discharge, and we knew exactly where the bottom, the end result was going to be at the Bronx River, so we were able to make sure that it didn't travel into our waterways. We were able to stop this illicit discharge before anything happened. And this was due to all the work of our GPS and this information that we've gathered over the past four or five years. This application must be signed by the mayor. Copies will be located in the library, clerk's office, DPW, and it will be on the web also. Just to tell everybody, we have questionnaire on our website that's in reference to our MS4 application and stormwater within the village of Tuckahoe, and I ask everybody to please go on and fill the questionnaire for us. It helps us during our MS4 application. And that's really it.
Now, you see, you did make it interesting, Frank, and I'm going to ask you a question now. Let's say the catch basin in front of my house, if there happens to be a vehicle accident and there's gasoline and oil pouring into that catch basin, the information that we have now, actually, because of that medallion that's riveted onto that catch basin, it'll tell us where that actually will enter, eventually where all those contaminants would try to enter the Bronx River, I take it?
Correct. My information on my GPS is a little bit more informative for me. Like you specified, the number will tell me exactly where to go. But we have all this information on our website. If everybody wants to go under the Department of Public Works, Stormwater Management section, we have mapping of our stormwater system. It's actually color-coded, telling everybody where ultimately the end result will be at the Bronx River. And we also have information on our sewer, sewer mains.
Cutting edge. Thank you.
Frank, help questions?
Um, sort of inadvertent pollutants such as runoffs from lawns that haven't been fertilized or have herbicides or pesticides on it, or from some of the parking lots where the cars are dripping oil, things like that, that inevitably is going to end up being dumped into the river as well. There's no way for screening for those kind of pollutants?
Uh, no. Mostly, well, we were very fortunate to do the Fisher Avenue Park, which has the stormwater separator. And what that does, it separates all the contaminants that would ultimately, excuse me, end up in the Bronx River, also having the previous pavement. So, rainwater will now travel through the surface of the blacktop pavement instead of running alongside of it into the catch basins. So, we're trying to eliminate any runoffs into the river, especially from parking lots, because as you stated, there are many contaminants, oils, toxins that are spilled onto the surface, and historically, that all ran into the river. Now, we're trying to maintain it and keep it so we can maintain it.
And how many actual discharges from the village, what's the number that goes into the river?
We have seven outfalls.
Okay, outfalls, all right.
Yes.
Would, theoretically, I'm sure it'd be expensive. Could you put that kind of a separator on each of those outfalls that you have on the Fisher Avenue parking lot?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The kind of separator you have with the Fisher Avenue parking lot, could that be installed on these outfalls to do the same screening of the contaminants?
It can. It'll have to be large enough to handle the amount of water, the volume of water. They're pretty enormous.
I imagine pretty expensive, then?
Yeah.
All right.
Well, thank you, Frank. Appreciate that. You're welcome. We have two public hearings tonight. The first is public hearing number one, which is the budget hearing on the tentative budget for fiscal year June 1, 2015, to May 31, 2016. Do I have a motion to open this public hearing? So moved. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luizy.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
I am in favor of that. We have had many, many meetings over the last few months on our budget, as we do every year, and this year, I'm actually going to ask our village administrator, David Burke, if you would just kind of give us a little recap as to where we're at right now.
Thank you. Think of what I'll start off with, is a little bit of the recap of what we've done this year, where, how we've got to this point, the tentative budget, where we are right now, some of the major changes. So, even though it is April, we're in the, we're in the budget hearing, this all started back in December, where I put a memo out to the board of, or my department heads, asking them to look at their budget request and come up with what they need to do in the next fiscal year. That was December. In January, one week in January, I met with each of the departments, myself and the treasurer, went through each line by line, asked them what they need, what they don't need, and kind of started to craft the budget. This, this all happened in conjunction with a couple of work sessions that we had with the Board of Trustees, nothing that you guys don't know, because we spent several hours on Saturday mornings talking about this. At that point, it was less about the line-by-line of the budget, but kind of maybe holistic kind of changes in our philosophy of where we want to go in the village. I know that I provided the Board of Trustees with a report about each department and kind of how those departments should look, either staffing-wise and funding-wise. So, we weren't into the nitty-gritty of the line-by-lines at that, at that point, but we were soon to get there. On March 20th, the tentative budget was filed with the village clerk, and at that point, it was a 6.09 percent tax levy increase. March 28th is when we had our Saturday budget work session with the Board of Trustees, where we started to go line by line of the budget, and that's where we really got a lot of the work done. So, where are we tonight? We're at the public hearing. New York State law dictates that the public hearing needs to be open by April 15th, which we've done, and closed by April 20th. So, if the Board of Trustees decides to keep the, the meeting open, the public hearing open, a special meeting would have to be scheduled by next Monday to close the public hearing. That is a board choice, a policy decision that you guys can make after discussing the budget tonight. The vote on the budget needs to happen by May 1st, or the tentative budget becomes the actual budget with any resolutions you may pass at that point. So, where are we? We're at the tentative budget was filed with the village clerk on March 20th with a 6.09 percent increase. This is a $443,000 increase, a tax levy increase. This is the property taxes. This is nothing else. So, that's a 6.09 percent increase. And how did we get to that point? It was because of total revenues are down and total expenditures are up. Our total revenue, this is before taxes, this is the non-property taxes, is the building permit fees, the parking lot fees, the sanitation revenue, things like that, those are estimated to come in nearly $150,000 less than they did last year. That puts us in immediate hole for this budget year. What also puts us in a hole for this budget year is we used fund balance last year into our budget of $150,000, something that we cannot do this year. So, immediately, we're almost at a $300,000 deficit in some of our non-property tax revenues. Couple that with an expenditure increase in the tentative budget of 2.5 percent, resulting in approximately $300,000, a little bit, a little bit less than $300,000. Some of the main cost drivers in that projection was some of the insurance issues that we've been having, increased workers' compensation, general liability. Those have gone up over $200,000. That, again, puts us in a huge hole right there. We've, to kind of stem that, we've gone to a new broker, we're out shopping insurances. Those, those are coming up. Hopefully, we'll get more favorable pricing, but obviously, in the tentative budget, we needed to put some realistic costs in there, and that kind of, these are some of the increases, why there's some increases in the budget. Also in the budget, just so everyone knows, is there's, is capital money in there, so there's $110,000 reinvested into the roads, so road resurfacing, some money into DPW and police equipment, so police vehicles and some other equipment for assaulters on DPW equipment. The budgets, we had a budget work session on March 28th with the board, and I met, we went through each of the line by lines, a lot of, a lot of tightening on those lines. I know a lot of the Board of Trustees members went there, and then we really kind of looked at all the expenditures, all the revenues, and kind of made some changes. We talked about some long-term changes in the, in the long-term parking, the meter rates that were increased, some of the parking permit fees were increased. Some of those, some of those changes moved that budget line from now to 6.09 to what you're going to discuss tonight, we're at a 4.98 percent increase in the tax levy. There's obviously been some personnel issues where there's some personnel has been cut in some of the lines and readjusted. A lot of people ask about the tax cap, if we're under the tax cap. Obviously, we're not under the tax cap right now. The New York State tax cap, a 2 percent tax cap, is not the 2 percent this year. It's, it's 2 percent or, for rate of inflation, which is 1.68 percent. And that 1.68 percent in our budget means $123,000. So, under the tax cap, our levy can only increase $123,000 if we wanted to stay under the tax cap. Obviously, with some of the insurance issues that we're having, we're not there right now. So, as the board opens up this public hearing, we currently stand at a 4.98 percent increase.
Thank you very much. That's a very good recap. It's been, every year is a tough year when you're working on your budget, and when you have some of these enormous cost drivers, it pretty much puts handcuffs on us. So, we've done an awful lot of work just to get it down to the 4.98 percent this year. So, with that, though, this is a public hearing, so this gives an opportunity right now from anyone from the public who would like to speak on our budget. Is there anybody who'd like to talk about it? I know there was a couple of people who came here tonight. Yes, ma'am? If you could just tell us your name, please?
Yes. My name is Kathleen Skinner. I live at 14 Westview Avenue in Tuckahoe, and, first, good evening, mayor and trustees. As a longtime patron of the Tuckahoe Library, I'm here tonight. I know I've just heard all of these figures and amounts, but there are some issues that I'd like to bring up. I'm here tonight to request that you and all the trustees look again at the budget and find a way to hire a full-time adult librarian. It has been almost four years since the library has had a full-time person at this position. And the adult librarian is really a very important person on the staff. Among his or her responsibilities are facilitating the book club and the very popular summer adult reading game, which draws many people to the library. Also, there's a new program this year called Books and Coffee, which introduces our readers to current bestsellers. In addition to the adult librarian, the adult librarian is the person to go to for any reference inquiries, be they by phone or in person. Right now, when the, when the part-time adult librarian is not there, key members of the staff have to take over and cover that position, which is not ideal as it takes away from their own duties. So, keeping this all in mind, I thank you for your attention and for giving special attention to this request. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down tonight. Appreciate it.
And Ms. Skinner, I'm not sure if you mentioned, but you are a member of the Library Board of Trustees?
Correct, yes, for one whole month now, yes. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Hello? My name is Antonio Del Vecchio. I live at 2 Consta Drive. Good evening, mayor and board. Some of you may know me as Carmelo Del Vecchio's son, who was a former trustee and deputy mayor. So, I came to discuss also about the library, and then also a little bit about my personal experience and why extending the budget would help, not just for the librarians, for the library, but also for the community. In 2012, I was what they called a learning ambassador, and that was pretty much a part-time job, where I helped the children's section of the library. I would come up with crafts and other programs for children who came in, and every day was a little bit of a struggle. We, once a week, I had to prepare a new craft basis on different programs, a lot of them centered around issues with the London Olympics that year, because that's where big, and one of the crafts was that I would make these medallions, and this is just an example. But every week, I would have to work out of a small, little closet and come up with something and scavenge around, and I would have to sometimes take my own money and put it in just so I could get extra stuff. And, you know, the library works with what it has. We do so much for the community. A lot of people come out and they like to bring their children, and for me, I grew up with the library. It was a learning experience. I learned reading, writing, in some cases. I had some of my best childhood memories there, because, let's face it, I was in and out of there all the time. And even as a college student today, I still go back there, and I study, and unfortunately, it's not open all the time, but I try to make the best with it. And just reevaluating, looking at the budget, because we don't work with much, and there's a lot that we could provide for the community, so I just wanted to share my experience, what, as a personal worker at the library, what I've had to deal with, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else like to speak on our budget? Yes, sir? Very friendly, familiar face, Mr. Paul Bryan.
Good evening, mister mayor, trustees. My name is Paul Bryan, 3th Park Place in Tuckahoe, and I'm also here in support of the library. Besides everything else that you already heard, I won't, you know, reiterate, I won't repeat anything. I will tell you one thing, that we also need this extra librarian as a backup to director. As you know, the libraries are very important. When the director's not there, it needs support and someone strong, this librarian would do it. In addition to that, as you know, there are many activities in the library, and you need enough staff to be there. The library has been there for us, it's there for everybody. It's a learning tool. It has computers for some people who don't have computers. It has any, any book that's there, it's a reference book, it has tapes. If for some reason you can't have access at home, the library is there for you to rent it and enjoy it, and it brings comfort to many people that don't have the things at home. I have brought me today about 135 signatures that I ask you gentlemen to please put the library, excuse me, have my mouth fixed, my voice doesn't work, to put the assistant director in the budget. It's a needed tool. It's not just something that's put there for dress, it's put there because it's needed. And I ask you to please consider this. May I bring the budget?
Please do, yes. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on our budget? Yes, sir?
Hello, I'm Brendan Fitzpatrick. I live at 24 Oakland Avenue, and just like Antonio, I used to, I was a learning ambassador last year at the Tuckahoe Public Library, and I feel like the community at the Tuckahoe Public Library is fantastic. There, excuse me, there are a lot of children's programs, and as a child who used to go to the Tuckahoe Public Library, I grew up going there. I think I went every day when I was six years old, and I still go all the time, and it's a fantastic place, and all the different programs that they offer really tailored to a lot of different things. They have a Lego program, they have, excuse me, book club, and there's also a teen garden that they have, and there are a lot of different experiences that you could just go to the library, and it's a fantastic community tool. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate your comments. Anybody else from the public? And if, oh, yes, ma'am, please. Good evening.
My name is Susan Kim. I live at 50 Columbus Avenue. I actually moved here because of the schools, and part of that was also because the library's right there. I cannot tell you how important this library is for all the children that are at William Cottle, because the summer program actually encourages these children to read. They also have the reading ambassadors that really encourage this also. The big concern I have is that if you cut the budget, or cut the budget for the library, or not put more money into this, that you're actually taking away the resources from these children. They need these programs, they need the children's librarian, they need the children's librarian not to be taken away when the adult librarian is not there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Anybody else? And I'm going to then toss it over to our trustees, and we'll start with trustee Quigley, if you want any comments on our budget.
No, I just appreciate people coming out often at these budget hearings. We have nobody who comes and says, "This is great, this is community participation." And I'm appreciative as a budget, as a liaison from the village board to the library, to hear the different voices from both inside and outside the library to, I think, educate and inform the public, as well as us on the board, as to the value and the importance of the library. So, our discussions over the budget, as you've heard from David Burke, are not done yet. We still have some discussions to have in terms of what we're going to add or take away, and I believe these comments will be very helpful as we pick up that discussion again. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Luizy.
Just for the benefit of the people that are watching at home, I want a question, and I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, that came up and spoke on behalf of the library, but do you know how much money is in the budget for the library this year?
$480,000.
$480,000 is in the budget this year for the library. Does anyone in this audience know how many cuts were absorbed by other departments in this village? Okay. I just want to make it clear that we are not cutting the library budget. We've kept the library budget at its present level. As a matter of fact, I believe we increased the budget for their supplies, but we didn't acquiesce to their request for a full-time librarian. Very simple reason, we don't have the money. There are other areas in this community that is suffering from these budgetary constraints, and, and my estimation, and as I've been saying since I've been on this board, are essential services to this village. And before I would cut an essential service to this village, I would cut in a non-essential service to this village, for the simple reason is the essential services, such as are provided by our DPW and our police department, provide a service to every resident of this community 24 hours a day, in the case of the police department, and in the case of our DPW workers, five days a week, when they're picking up refuse, recyclables, and when we have inclement weather, obviously, the clearing of the snow. Just so that you know, we have not cut the library budget, just for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Alfasi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also will echo trustee Luizy's sentiments. I don't believe I could say better than he just did. Certainly, we all understand the importance and the value of the library. We all understand that. But we also understand that we have to put our resources and those limited resources, and let me say for the record, I'm not real happy with this budget right now, but with the increase in taxes that is projected. So, with that said, I'll leave my comments for, for the night that we vote, but I think we've done the best that we can for the library in these tough economic times.
Thank you. And I'll wrap it up here. You know, it's not our, it's not a $480,000 budget, it's an $11 million budget, and the lion's share of what we're spending money on is, of course, our police department, our public works department, and the library, of course, there's a, you know, close to half a million dollar chunk in the library. One of the points that I was really driving home during our budget conversations was that I feel that we, we as a board, we need to have a much better understanding as to who our library is specifically serving. I think that there is a, and I'll just speak for myself, that I believe that there is, there's been a growing sense over the years that our library really doesn't serve the constituents of this board, meaning people who live in the village of Tuckahoe, that there are, that our library is serving people from Yonkers and people from other communities. So, you know, then we have to take a step back and say, "Well, is the library supposed to be for the greater good of all of Westchester County?" Well, if that's great, then Westchester County should give us an extra million dollars. So, you know, then we have to take a step back and say, well, is the library supposed to be for the greater good of all of Westchester County? Well, if that's great, then Westchester County should give us an extra million dollars and we'll hire a couple of full-time librarians. Well, that's not going to be the case. But I don't necessarily know that our library is serving people who only live in the village of Tuckahoe, or only live in Eastchester, or live in Yonkers or Mount Vernon. So one of the things that I said I really want us to do is to actually have a system in place where we can get an accurate accounting of who is actually coming into our library and using the services. I think that the library is, I'm down there often enough where I believe that our library isn't, I don't think any library today is a library today that it used to be years ago. I think our library today is more of a community center. And I think that's a great thing. I think that the library serves all the programs that Mr. Quigley talks about each month, and if you notice, I'm sitting here writing some down. I think they're fantastic programs, but they're not people going there and checking out a book, taking it home for two weeks, and then bringing it back. That's not to say that that's a bad thing. I think it's a wonderful thing that people are actually going to that building, whether they're going to the library end of the building or to the community center end of the building, but they're going to a building and they're actually getting service. And in this case, we're talking about $480,000 that are going towards programs, not just books and newspapers and computer use. So it's my goal this year to get a very, very clear understanding as to, we know what the library is doing because we hear it every month because we get a great report. Thank you very much, trustee Quigley. But we don't really, or I'm gonna, again, I'll speak for myself, I can't say that I feel comfortable right now that, that more than 50% of the people who are using our Tuckahoe library are people who live here in Tuckahoe. And I think about that and I say, you know what? The people who are paying this $11 million in this budget are people who live in Tuckahoe. So I think it's our respons, it's my responsibility to make sure that if we're gonna go ahead and take $11 million and some of that is gonna be applied towards, a half a million dollars towards the library, that it's going to people who are paying for it. So that's something that I, it's a challenge that I think that we really have to do this year. So when we're sitting here next year, we could say, you know what? We have the data, we have the research, and there was, I don't know, 5,000 people who entered that building and they spent, you know, 10,000 hours of programs, and of the 5,000 people, 4,500 lived in 10707. And that's information that I think is really important, because if, I think if we all had that intelligence, we would then say, you know what? Maybe we should give them a million dollars. I mean, maybe, I think it would change the perception that we have of what we're actually funding. So I think that's quite important. But getting back to what trustee Luise and Alfassi said, at the end of the day, it's all about a pot of money and what is our first, our primary concern? Well, our primary concern, of course, is to make sure that when you hit 911, that there's gonna be a patrol car at your house in very short order. That in addition to that, you don't have to hit 911, because our police department did a fantastic job in community policing to make sure that we don't have certain crime issues that maybe some of our neighboring communities might have. In addition to that, we hear all the time that our Department of Public Works is second to none. Our streets are plowed long before anybody else's are. Our potholes are being filled almost as quickly as I would, as I would like them, or as my car would like them. Actually, though, I have to say, Tuckahoe is fantastic. My day job is in Yonkers, and between traveling from Yonkers down to the city and back into Tuckahoe, you know, my teeth are rattling around in my head until I get to Tuckahoe. So, you know what? There's a sanitation worker who steps on my property five days a week. These are all things that, when we ring doorbells during an election cycle, these are the things that people tell us that they want to keep going in the village of Tuckahoe. We hear it time and again, you know? People say, hey, we know that we have to pay taxes, we know that we're gonna have to pay an increase, just make sure you're gonna give us the quality of life and the level of service that you're providing. So I think that there's a big difference between raising property taxes by 5% and not continually giving the service versus if you have to every couple of years increase beyond this fantasy 2% that the governor has imposed upon everyone. I think that from where I stand, I don't want to pay 5%. Well, you know what? I don't want to pay 1.68%, but I can tell you this much, I am very pleased with the level of service that I get from the police department, from the public works department, from the administration in village hall here, and from the library too. So that's where I stand on the budget. So with that, we've heard from the public, we've heard from the board.
Mayor, just one last comment. I take all my colleagues' comments about how to balance the budget and how to allocate the funds very seriously, and we've had some very good discussions. However, to say something to the effect that library is not an essential service of the village is both wrong and shortsighted and ultimately harmful, I think, to the overall quality of life in our village. We could argue about how to fund the library and what service the library should offer, but I think in, there's no question that the library is an essential service of the village. Different than the police, different than the DPW, but still essential. And that's something that'll be considered, I think, in our further discussions.
Thank you. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Thank you very much. Our next public hearing is public hearing number two, which is on a proposed local law entitled "A Local Law Concerning an Amendment to Section 8-1 of the Village of Tuckahoe Zoning Ordinance of 2001 thereof that would decrease the number of planning board members from seven down to five." Do I have a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. I'm gonna ask our attorney to speak on this just in a second, but it's, the planning board has been a seven-member planning board for, oh, quite a few years now, maybe five, six years, I'm gonna say. And 2007 is one of them?
Yeah, it was always a five-member board, and I think it went up to...
Then it went up, it was five forever, and then it went up to seven. And you know what, I, it was definitely a little difficult and challenging at quite a few of the meetings for them to have a quorum when you have a seven-member board. So that's one of the issues. And a lot of the larger-scale projects that they were dealing with have now subsided. We do have a big hotel project that's on the board coming up, but it's time to bring this back down to a five-member board, and we have some extraordinarily qualified people who are on that board. So we've had two vacancies, and that gives us the opportunity to go ahead and solidify this as a five-member board. So, did I cover the base right?
You did, Mr. Mayor. And again, the, like you said, the board is now down, there's five members on it currently, so now we can bring the number from seven down to five. And like you said, there's been a number of months where we were unable to get a quorum. And so we have applicants coming, and we're all here, and unfortunately, we couldn't get the four members necessary when you have a seven-member board for the quorum. So now that we're going down to a five-member board, quorum would be three, so it hopefully should be a little easier to get that quorum here.
Thank you. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this planning board change? And if not, any of my colleagues on the board?
Mr. Mayor, I recall when the board went from five members to seven members, and if memory serves me right, the rationale was more eyes on the board would help make it more efficient and have a diversity of attitudes and a diversity of experiences, bringing that to the board. I thought it was a bad idea then, and I'm glad we're bringing it back down to five.
All right, thank you. If that's all the comments we have, then do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And that will bring us to the adoption of minutes, which is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of March 9, 2015, and the approval of minutes of the reorganization meeting of April 6, 2015. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Correspondences, do we have any correspondences from the clerk's office?
No, we do not.
And do we have any correspondences from the board members? You wanna read now? We could wait if you want to read a little bit. That's gonna bring us to the first opportunity to address the board on anything on our agenda tonight. And we finally have some people in the room, so I'm hoping somebody has something to say. Anybody want to speak on anything that's on our agenda tonight? Okay, if not, then we're gonna move to resolutions. Resolution number one is adopting a local law concerning an amendment to section 8-1 of the Village of Tuckahoe Zoning Ordinance of 2001 thereof that would decrease the number of planning board members from seven to five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And resolution number two is approving the use of the Tuckahoe trolley for the Memorial Day Parade on May 25, 2015. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number three is accepting a donation from the Tuckahoe Eastchester Chamber of Commerce for the trolley. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Thank you, chamber. Resolution number four is authorizing the issuance of a special cabaret permit and approval to Broken Bow Brewery for a band to play on May 16, 2015, from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. to celebrate American Craft Beer Week. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number five is authorizing the use of the Lake Avenue parking lot from noon to 6:00 p.m. on June 6, 2015 for a motorcycle event sponsored by Growlers Beer Bistro and Empire Harley-Davidson. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And we're gonna have a discussion on this one. I know there's a couple of folks here to talk about it, but I see Eric is here. Did you want to talk about this? Come on up. So tell us about this.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm Eric Lorberfeld. Good evening, Mayor Eklund, board members. And I'm also with, I own Growlers Beer Bistro, and I'm with Randy Medina, who's with Empire Harley. So we really just wanted to have an outdoor event, and we, you know, we do Oktoberfest now every year, and it's been quite successful and fun for the village. And we thought that we would like to do something in the springtime. So Randy is a friend and, you know, he is the marketing manager for Empire Harley. We're also both very friendly with a charity, Habitat for Humanity, that we thought would be a good cause for, you know, to raise money for, you know, in the interest of having a good time, you know, some outdoor food, some music, some beer, local beer. And we just thought it would be, you know, a nice event. It would be limited to just 12 noon to 6:00 p.m., one day only. It's not a full weekend situation. But, you know, we're very happy to talk more about the details. You know, we're certainly sensitive to the noise, you know, that would be generated from the event, and, you know, our neighbor's so close at the Riverview, and we, you know, we're trying to take that into consideration. You know, we don't want it to be a wild and crazy event, I don't think it will be, but, you know, we're gonna do what we can to keep it under control.
So in full disclosure, I'm a Harley guy, as you know, been riding most of my life. And so I've been to some of the rowdiest motorcycle events, but I've also been to an awful lot that are very calm and tame. And it seems that the older I get, the more I realize in the environment that we live in in Westchester, it's definitely a lot different than, let's say, in the Midwest or out on the West Coast and some of the other larger bike events. So we're not talking about that. We're talking about, I guess, a motorcycle run that starts at the dealership and ends at Growlers at the parking lot? Is there a band in the parking lot? Can you, give us a visual as to, I'm riding my Harley with my wife, and we pull into the parking lot, and we're parking in the lower lot, or are we parking in the upper lot? Walk me through it.
The idea would be that we would put the motorcycle parking in the lower lot only, on the side of the median that's closest to Lake Avenue. And then car parking would be in the upper lot. And then we would kind of just use the area in front of Growlers to have, you know, everything we discussed, yes, a band, there would be live music outside in the parking lot. It would be a barbecue, you know, an outdoor grill, just hamburgers, hot dogs, chicken kind of thing. There would be some local breweries that might set up a table outside. We haven't even really spoken to them yet, but we're very friendly, obviously, with Broken Bow, with Yonkers Brewing Company, also Gun Hill, but, you know, it could be any one of those. And so I'm gonna let Randy describe a little more about the details of the Harley part of it, because there are some aspects to it that are specific to Harley.
Great.
All right, Randy Medina, marketing manager for Empire Harley-Davidson, and you're Michelle. What we're looking to do, what we want to do, we have a run that will leave from Empire Harley-Davidson that would come to Growlers. At Growlers, we want to have, like you said, the band, and we wanted to have some bikes on display. We also wanted to have a bike show so that any, anybody that wants to come can put their bike up for judging. The entrance fees, which would go to Habitat, that's part of our ways to raise funds, so would be registration fees for anyone who does the ride. In addition to the bike show, we'd also like to have a, what we call a jumpstart, which the mayor may or may not know what that is.
I saw that out in Sturgis.
It's a, yeah, it's a stationary Harley-Davidson on a, basically on a drum, that anyone can ride. You don't need a motorcycle license, you just have to be over 18. You can, someone who's either new to riding or maybe he's been away from riding for a while can get on there and take one through the gears.
That's good. It gives somebody the feel of riding a motorcycle to decide whether or not they maybe even want it, buy a motorcycle too. So, any idea, how many people do you think you may get?
We're up against, I don't think we'll get that many bikes as far as...
Amerikade is that weekend.
Yeah, we're up against Amerikade, exactly. So it'll be a small run. We're not looking to do a huge run from Growlers. It's really more of the, who we're gonna pull in from the community. But we'll probably, if, I'd say 30, 40 bikes would be a good run if we get that many.
Amerikade is a huge motorcycle rally that's up in Lake George that weekend, so most people that I know will, well, a lot of people will be up there. So it may be a good opportunity to, you know, start small and see how it goes. Great boost for your business and probably a great boost for some of the other restaurants too. I could see people, you know, hey, let's maybe go on up and park on Main Street and maybe get a bite to eat at one of the other restaurants. No offense to Growlers too, but, so I think it may be good for just the overall merchants in Tuckahoe, so. Have you talked to the police department about, you know, logistics of, you know, crowd control and any policing aspect to this?
Yes, we have. And, you know, at a minimum, we're gonna be hiring at least one officer to be on duty during the event from the time it starts until the time it ends. And actually, we agreed that we would leave it open to the possibility of having more than one, depending on, you know, how many people are there.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for? I'm gonna ask the chief to maybe come on up too, so, thank you.
I guess my first question, being, I'm a four-wheeler, so that means I drive a car.
Cage.
I've always been supportive of your events, as you well know. My concern, or what I'd like you to withdraw... My concern or what I'd like you to address is how, what do I tell the residents of that area about the noise factor from the motorcycles? You're saying thirty to forty? I'm going to go thirty to fifty. So what, how do I, uh, calm their fears about that noise? Because I know Harleys do make noise, that's why you guys ride them, as opposed to the co- um, the Hondas and the rice burners, as they're commonly known. And will that ride, that simulation ride also, will that entail noise as well?
It is, it is a running bike, yes.
Okay, so we're going to have a constant din of a motorcycle, is what you're saying?
Uh, on and off.
Okay. Plus the band.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Eric, I think with the, um, Oktoberfest, you provide us with the liability insurance, we're going to do the same thing from you.
Absolutely, yes, yep.
Thanks. That's, good sack, we'll go to Camille.
Yep.
Um, if, if I could.
Yes. Trustee Alfassi.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are they going to need, uh, DPW as well to hire for cleanup?
I'm sorry? Yes, okay. Let's talk, let's hear from our, uh, village administrator first.
So, um, the, the chief and I have had, uh, some conversation with Eric, obviously over email, and we've, we met in the chief's office and went over this. Um, some things that we would definitely have to have is, uh, the police staffing, um, up to the chief's satisfaction, so we'll, we'll talk about that. They would need the liability insurance, and they need, um, certain other insurances through New York State, uh, to have beer and alcohol a- outside. Um, though also, in regards to the, the parking lot, um, there is some question of, of cleaning the parking lot afterwards through the satisfaction of the village and some of their other events, so it's something that we agreed that we would sit down with DPW, myself and Eric, and figure out the best plan to make sure and ensure that Lake Avenue was in a, in, in the perfect condition afterwards. So they may or may not need to have maybe one DPW guy, I don't know yet, but that's something that we would figure that we would discuss if approval.
And you're okay with that, Eric?
Yeah, no, we're, we're totally fine with it. In fact, what they did last Oktoberfest was, uh, they were good enough to give us a couple of extra dumpsters during the event, just to contain, you know, the waste and, you know, we haven't talked to them yet, but that would be, you know, a good start, for sure.
Okay. Trustee Alfassi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Another motorcycle ride.
Yes, yes, I do ride. Um, I think everyone took all the questions I was going to ask. But, uh, Trustee Luisey and I are on, on the same wavelength tonight. You, you, exactly what I was thinking about. Um, but I'll get back to his point again. Um, you came and, and told us that you were going to try to alleviate as much noise as possible, um, but you failed to tell us how you're going to do that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, to some degree, it's not totally within our control, but...
Understood.
When I said alleviating the noise, what I was really referring to was, uh, the music, that, you know, we could control the type of music, the volume of the music, the direction of the music. Um, when it comes to the motorcycles, I don't know how much we can do. All I can tell you is this is a destination event. Aside from the jumpstart vehicle, I, you know, it's, yes, there will be a din of motors running. I can't say that there won't be, but I don't see much else, other than when the people come and go. Um, you know, there's certainly not going to be burnouts in the parking lot or anything like that.
No, i- i- if I may, may, make a suggestion. Um, and I appreciate that, and I think you're right. There, more than likely, uh, though, you know, once someone arrives, they're going to turn off their motorcycle and admire it from, you know, a close but, uh, uh, non-running motorcycle. Uh, but if, uh, you know, people start to say, uh, why don't you turn it on and let's hear it, and let's rev it up a little bit, you know, I would hope that if it becomes a little bit abusive, uh, you might have some staff to walk around and, and say, hey, guys, you know, we, we, this is our first event, we don't want to kill it right here, and it'll be our last one.
Absolutely.
Uh, so, um, so, you know, when this comes to a vote, you will have my vote. Uh, it's a cautious vote, though. Uh, so let's see how it goes.
Fair, fair enough, and we do feel exactly that way. We, we don't want to mess this up. We don't want it to get out of control. We don't want the noise to be an issue. So it's in our interest, too, to keep things quiet.
Understood.
And I thought about it, too, and I was thinking, you know, it's not like Marla Brando and the Wild Ones where they're all riding in, you know, there's thirty of them at one time. There are actually, there's one coming in, maybe two or three coming in, then there's none for a while. You know, it's not everyone riding together at one time. So I think you're going to have, uh, staggered people entering as well as staggered people leaving. And look, I, for one, um, if I were bringing my bike down there, I'm not going to sit there in the parking lot and, and, and air-cooled Harley, which is not getting cooled, and just melt away in the parking lot on that eighty-degree day that I'm expecting to have very soon. Um, and you know what? Look, somebody's going to park their bike, they're going to stop, and they're going to be rubbing it down because they want a trophy. Um, you're given trophies or some kind of prizes. So, yeah, that's, that's what happens at these things. I mean, it's, uh, it's more about the show than it is, um, than it is the noise, so. But I, I hope that we're all right here, so.
And, and also, it's a Saturday afternoon.
Yeah.
It's, it, and, and, you know, I'm just thinking, I'm not a rider. Last time I rode a motorcycle was in Bermuda. They don't have Harleys down there. I get off the train at the Metro North Station, and I hear some roaring of the Harleys. I'm going to check it out. I might not know about it, but I get off there, and you're right across the street, and I hear the stuff say, hey, this looks like a fun event. So, I mean, don't sweat the noise. I mean, everybody's getting a little bit, I think, um, neurotic about this whole thing. It's a motorcycle event. It's going to be for six hours. It's going to be noisy, it's going to be fun. Uh, I've been to the Oktoberfest every year, they're noisy and they're great events. This will be like that as well, so, you know, I, my opinion, don't sweat the noise.
Here, here, way to go. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll just ask the chief to come on up and weigh in.
Thank you.
Let us feel that added level of comfort. What do you say, chief?
As... We met in my office.
Give it another round. Never get through a meeting without... I know, I knew.
It's still under warranty, chief, don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the gentleman did meet in my office with the, uh, village administrator. We went through all the ground rules, um, very confident. As was stated, there'll be an officer, um, posted at the event. Um, I think what the mayor said was quite right, though. These are not the, you know, outlaw motorcycle gangs that are coming to Tuckahoe. Um, they're family events, they're having a jumping castle in the parking lot. Uh, it, it's a family event, it's twelve P M. to six P M. There'll be police officer there to make sure that, that the motorcycles that are coming in have legal mufflers and those types of things, so that, you know, we're not folding up our enforcement tent and not paying attention to what's going on, not only in the parking lot, in the street as well. So, uh, you know, I feel, uh, confident that, that it'll go smoothly, and we'll monitor it, and if, and if it doesn't go well, um, we'll, you know, we'll know how to act, uh, next time it comes up.
Sounds perfect.
Okay.
Thank you, chief. All right, we've definitely talked this one to death, so, um, how about a roll call?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
Opposed.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And now we're going to go to, uh, resolution number six, which is authorizing the use of the Marbledale Road from eleven A M. to two P M. on June seventh, two thousand and fifteen, for a classic car and motorcycle show. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? And I know we have somebody here to come and talk about that. Pardon me? Oh, five P M., you said. Yeah, that's... Is that what it was last year, five P M.?
No, last year was, uh, different. It was from ten to, uh, ten to three.
Ten to three, so it was five hours. This year, it's from eleven to five.
Correct.
So tell us what, is it going to be the same as last year? Talk, talk to us a little bit about it.
Yes.
And tell us who you are, please.
Kristen Stone with Broken Bow Brewery, and one of the owners. Um, yes, it's the exact same thing, just a different time. Um, it was still with the, uh, Shiftmasters, uh, Car Club. They'll be lining the street, and we will have six of the local restaurants in our parking lot, same exact setup as last year, serving food. We will obviously have some beer, water, soda, I believe an ice cream truck again will be coming. It's really the exact same as last year.
Okay. Um, time, we're okay with? I know, I'm, I'm looking at our village administrator, like, all right. Um, eleven to five, I'm trying to, last year, what time did you wrap it up?
Um, it was, well, three.
I think four, gave us an extra hour last year.
An extra, what, it was supposed to be a three, you got till four?
Yeah.
Okay. Chief, any reason why, chief, five o'clock, all right? No problem, he's shaking his head. Uh, we didn't know, uh, maybe there's something going on at four o'clock, and it's like, oh my goodness, we don't want a conflict, so. Um, it was a great show last year, great weather, I had a great time. I live on Marbledale Road, just walked right down the street, um, beautiful cars, great, um, uh, tunes that were playing there, so, uh, it was just fantastic to be able to, you know, get a burger and go inside and sit down with my son, you know, thought it was so cool to sit in a brewery, and he's allowed to do that, just sit there while I'm having a beer, very neat. Um, great show, great weather, I wish you all the success. And again, you're paying for police officers, you'll work that out with the chief as to how many. Um, and what about Department of Public Works? Did we have any litter issues? I'm looking Frank DiMarco, he's, nope?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, so, um, insurance is on file?
Yeah, Wheels of Time has the insurance.
Wheels of Time?
Wheels of Time has the insurance.
Okay, and they'll file that insurance with us? And, um, yeah, she doesn't have it yet, but just make sure you get it. So, good. Hopefully, a great weather, that's what it, uh, all boils down to.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Just wanted to encourage everyone at home to please leave your cars, vehicles at home, walk, have a couple of beers, walk home.
Thank you.
It was a nice day. All right, that's going to bring us to a roll call on this.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
Favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Well, we didn't rake them over the coals as much as we did the Harley people. Okay, resolution number seven is authorizing the mayor to sign the two thousand and fifteen annual M S. for Stormwater Report for the New York State D E C. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
Favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. In favor. Resolution number eight is declaring municipal equipment as surplus and authorizing sale of said equipment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number nine is authorizing the mayor to sign a consulting agreement with C P I. dash H R. effective March one, two thousand and fifteen, until February twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number ten is authorizing the mayor to sign an addendum to the license agreement with the town of Eastchester for the use of the Senior Nutrition Center at the Tuckahoe Community Center. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And we are told that this is most likely going to be, and we believe it is, going to be the very last extension, so we look at Mr. Galuzzi and tell him, get ready for an empty community center coming up in the fall.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number is eleven is authorizing the village clerk to issue a peddler's license to Sean Capiello, doing business as Good Humor, to sell ice cream and candy for a period of six months. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And discussion. I have a question. Um, Good Humor Truck, I know we have, uh, historically not issued any peddler's licenses for many, many years, but I was talking to my wife, and she said, she believes that there was a Good Humor Truck.
We did, we had a Good Humor, uh, truck.
How long ago was that?
The paper, back, the backup paper I gave you? We had, I believe her name was Nikki, and she did it for three or four years while I was here, and then she gave up the business, and then no one really approached us to, to start again.
How many years ago was that? Do you remember?
I'm thinking maybe two thousand and eight.
When we issue a peddler's license, does that allow them to pretty much pedal any street in the village? Or do we ever restrict it to, like, only in front of the parks, or? Now, I'm talk, I'm looking at our village attorney for that.
Since we really haven't had any.
Right.
Um, I just don't know if the board's ever restricted these things in the past. Um, I don't see a rea- reason why you can't restrict it, um...
Well, I guess for, for one thing, if I was going, you know, I, I guess, I'm okay with a Good Humor Truck ringing the bell in front of the park on a, on a summer afternoon, you know what? You know what? But I'm definitely not okay for the Good Humor Truck parked out in front of Carvel ringing the bell. So, I don't know.
Well, these restrictions here, there are... There's restrictions, I believe, in place.
There is nothing in here at all. It just says, issue a peddler's license.
On here.
Oh, in the...
On our agenda, from our workshop. No stand, not stand or permit the vehicle used by him to stand in one place in any public place or street for more than 10 minutes? Is that part of our code?
Yeah, this is 17-9 of the village code.
So if we issue this license, he has to adhere to these provisions?
Absolutely. This would be, this is what you're issuing the license under.
Not blow a horn, ring a bell, or use any other noisy device to attract public attention to his wares.
Not sell any ice cream within 250 feet of a school between 8:00 and 4:00 on school days, okay.
I don't, I don't believe I have a copy of that with me, but is there a time restriction on there?
Just, just the school. They, they, they're not allowed to do it within 250 feet of a school from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
And if we wanted to put it in...
We can make a friendly amendment right now, because I'd like to have a restricted timeframe. I prefer Good Humor not to be running the streets at midnight.
Or even after dark, I would say. But I... Do we then have to change 17-9, or can we just make it? An amendment to this resolution?
Well, I think you can put a condition on the license.
A condition on the...
Yeah, I think, I think that'd be the prudent way to go right now. And then we could look into the code at another date, but at least this one's in front of you now.
For a period of six months between the hours of dawn to dusk, or what, what would we say?
It's up to the board if that's when, if you want to put in a specific hour there, or dawn to dusk, whatever.
You may want to put a specific hour there.
Yeah.
You're leaving it out to the discretion of the...
Yeah, that's true. Somebody who's gonna say...
It goes dark or not.
Chief is laughing at me over here. Those poor little kids are gonna line up at 8:00 o'clock and it's still light out.
I, I think, I think I'll draw out what I think is perhaps a reasonable time, 8:00 PM?
What do you think, chief? Oh, my goodness. Yes. Note to self, replace all the batteries on these lights.
Just talking about past experience, as the village clerk said, Humor Truck here for several years, up until about three or four years ago, I believe. They're out when the kids are out, so I, I, I don't want you to think you have to overthink it. They're not gonna be out at midnight because they sell to children. They're not gonna be out in front of Carvel because it's competition. They're going to be where the kids are at a playground and they, the parents don't want to drive them or walk them to Carvel. So if we're just going by past experience, it really has not been a problem as far as competition with local merchants. It's a very seasonal opportunity, weather-related. During the daylight hours when, you know, parents are out at the playgrounds with their children. So, past experiences, there, there was not a need to restrict it.
Time restriction.
You know, we're talking about a Good Humor Truck. Not to say in the future that you want to tighten up the law for other peddlers, that certainly would be a consideration, but for this particular item on the agenda, I don't think it's necessary, necessary to overthink it in this particular case.
I guess I'm still on that Harley Davidson torture mode. Okay, alright, so we'll keep it as is and we'll just take a vote on it. Roll call, please.
Trustee Quigley.
Yeah, I'm going to oppose on two grounds. One is that we have not allowed this in the past with other food vendors, mobile food vendors. And I think this would be inconsistent to approve this as opposed to when we disapprove, say, sandwich trucks. And secondly, in this era where we see an obesity epidemic, I think the last thing the village needs to do is to sanction or encourage easy access to junk food. So for those two reasons, I'm opposed.
Trustee Luisey.
I'm gonna echo what my fellow colleague, Trustee Quigley, said, and I'm gonna add, I think that for a $200 permit fee that he is going to pay the village, we're losing sales tax revenue as he's gonna keep all the money that he makes thereafter. And as we have consistently done since my time on the board, I've always voted against these type of peddlers. And once again, regard, I appreciate what the chief said, but I think we're taking revenue away from our local businesses, whether it be the Carvel or Nikki's Deli who's selling froze fruit, so I am opposed.
Trustee Alfassi.
I'll tell you, this is a tough one for me.
That's because we have kids.
I mean, I think, I think, you know, a Good Humor Truck or any ice cream truck is part of Americana. It's part of growing up, you know? Dad, mom, can have a couple of dollars, I hear the ice cream truck. I'm gonna vote in favor.
And me too, but I think that's gonna be a split vote, so that means it doesn't happen. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
So, okay. Resolution number 12 is a resolution to amend the schedule of rates for all long-term meters more than four hours located in the village of Tuckahoe as follows. The amount of time allocated, 25 cents coin for 20 minutes, $1 coin for 80 minutes, $7.25 all day. Cash key may be used for all-day parking. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 13 is designating April 24, 2015, as Arbor Day in the village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. This one I love. Resolution number 14, accepting a donation in the approximate value of $7,900 from New York Ladder and Scaffolding Corporation for services, scaffolding services, right outside that window here at Village Hall. Do I have a motion?
I, I, go ahead. I would just like discussion though, please.
Sure. Second?
Second.
Oh, I need a motion first.
So moved.
Okay, second. And discussion.
Who is this New York Ladder company and what do they have the business donating stuff here?
Well, in the interest of ethical full disclosure, it happens to be the company that I own and actually has, now I'm gonna get that opportunity to plug my family business.
There you go.
Established in 1894, one of the oldest businesses in Westchester County. Third-generation business of which I am the very proud owner. And very proud to say that my grandfather started this business. My dad and my uncle, both lifelong Tuckahoe residents, operated the business for close to 50 years. And I've been the proprietor of the business since the day Chief Costanzo and I graduated high school. And so, I'm very pleased and happy to go ahead and, whenever we can, to go ahead and donate our service for the benefit of people who have helped my family for all the years we've been in the village.
Mr. Mayor, in the future, I will not ask any more questions.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
Fortunately, I'm out of that Harley's frame of minds. In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
Very much in favor. Resolution number 15 is authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $541,125.87. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 16 is authorizing the mayor to sign an employment agreement with Robert J. Fels. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 17 is appointing a seasonal accountant. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 18 is authorizing the mayor to sign an employment agreement with David Burke. Do I have a motion?
Excuse me, mayor, we added on to that.
Authorizing, sorry, authorizing the mayor to sign an appointment agreement with David Burke and authorizing him as signatory on all bank accounts.
Do we have a motion?
Thank you.
You sure?
On all bank accounts. Okay, do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And now I'll have a little discussion. So, what have we done here? We have had a resolution to sign an employment agreement with Robert J. Fels, and I'll explain who he is. A seasonal accountant and David Burke, we all know is our village administrator. I have decided, and one, one of the items that a mayor does when he is re-elected or elected, is he appoints certain key individuals, and he has the authority to appoint a village clerk. And I was very pleased to appoint Camille DeSalvo as our village clerk. I made a decision that I was not going to reappoint our treasurer, John Pintos, as the village treasurer, so instead, part of a larger plan that's been actually put in place for a while now, which incorporated Mr. Burke as our village administrator, this all started last year. We are, I'm pleased as punch that we are actually moving in the direction of providing a much stronger treasury department in the village. We hired a gentleman by the name of Ryan Ruetta, who's worked out fantastically. He is our deputy treasurer. He's been on board for quite a while now. But in the process, in order to hire a new treasurer, what you must do is you have to let your current treasurer's term expire, which has occurred. Then you have to have, you always have to have a treasurer, so what we've done is we've actually engaged Mr. Burke as our figurehead interim treasurer. He gets paid a dollar a year, a dollar a week or a dollar a year for that role.
A year.
We have on the agenda here an employment agreement with Robert J. Fels. Robert J. Fels was the treasurer for the village of Bronxville for about 30 years. He retired last year. We called on him and asked him if he would step in and help us kind of reorganize our treasury department, bring us maybe a little bit closer to the 21st century that we would like to be. And also help us, which is very important, help us in the interview process and selecting a new village treasurer. Our goal is to try and find a village treasurer, so this is out there for anyone who hears this. We're looking to hire a village treasurer from, maybe a deputy treasurer from another municipality, sort of like we hired Mr. Burke. He was a deputy village administrator from another municipality. Great opportunity for him to take the top job here in Tuckahoe. We're looking to do the very same thing with the treasury department here, so. With that, the county requires us to go ahead and make sure that we have all these positions in place, which we've done tonight. And over the next two months, we are looking to have a brand-new treasurer in place who will have a excellent deputy treasurer to work with, Ryan Ruetta. And that's, it's been a goal of all of ours for the last year, and we're thrilled that we're finally able to put all these steps in place. So that's my discussion on that. And a roll call, please.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 19 is appointing a seasonal deputy village treasurer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 20 is approving the Shiloh Baptist Church use of the following streets for their third annual vow walk on Saturday, April 25, 2015, in loving memory of Valeria Murray, and in support of all those affected by cancer. The walk will start at 8:00 AM, starting at Shiloh Baptist Church. It'll travel the following streets: Marble Dell Road to Fisher Avenue, down to Columbus Avenue, down to Main Street, Yonkers Avenue, Garrett Avenue, Armour Villa, Main Street, Marble Dell Road, and then back to the Shiloh Baptist Church. And they will be providing us with liability insurance for this event. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor, very much. That's gonna bring me to some appointments that I will be making. First is appointment of John Palladino to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire April 1, 2020. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. The second appointment is the appointment of Ray Nuremberg to the Planning Board to fill the unexpired term of Eric Fang, which is expiring on April 1, 2016. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number three is the appointment of Eric Fang as an ad hoc member of the Planning Board for a term to expire on April 1, 2016. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I want to thank Eric. He's actually taken on some teaching responsibilities in his professional life, and I think that's wonderful. So he has agreed to, when he can, to fill in as an ad hoc member on the Planning Board. He's been a full-term member, so we're very happy that he's gonna stay on board. A very talented person.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Appointment number four is the appointment of David Burke as our village treasurer for a two-year term. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
For a whole dollar. Enjoy that dollar.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Thank you, David. Appointment number five is the appointment of Ryan Ruetta as deputy village treasurer for a one-year term. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Appointment number six is the appointment of that very friendly face of Jackie Ferretti, who we all see when we go to the village clerk's office. Jackie is being appointed as our deputy village clerk for a term of one year. Congratulations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. We have added a new item in our agenda, which is called discussion items. And tonight, what we're gonna be talking about is modifying the term of office for the mayor and trustee from two to four years. This is something that we have been discussing for a while now. Actually, it's something that's been discussed for all the years I've been on the board. We want to open up this conversation for a meeting or two before we actually pass this. There's, every year, whenever we have this conversation, there's always a concern that it's self-serving. Do we do it and does it affect the group of individuals who we're talking about? We all recognize that it's a good thing to actually get new elected officials in a community to start off on a four-year basis rather than a two-year basis. As we can all attest to, it takes you two years just to figure out the code for the men's room, I think, sometimes around here. I mean, there's an...
By the way, what is that code?
Can't tell you. There is so much that is, especially in today's time, there is so much that you have to learn. And this is more for the next generation of elected officials that somebody who's gonna actually take office, they don't have to go ahead and on their first day of office start to think about, like so many other political figures have to, about reelection of their next term. So this allows a trustee or a mayor or a ju, well, the judge has always had a four-year term, to go ahead and actually take the job, kind of take a deep breath and not have to be burdened with the whole concept of, am I only gonna be here for two years and should I be maybe trying to do something or accomplish a particular project that they were thinking about? Because they're not gonna be here to actually see it through. Four years definitely gives somebody that opportunity, that time opportunity, to start and finish something. And it gives the, having, without having term limits, it gives the voters in our community always have the opportunity to boot us all out of office if you don't like us, so. This, again, it's, it's an issue that is, that certainly has bipartisan support on this board. We've talked about how we do this. How do we accomplish this? There's been an awful lot of research done from our legal and our village administrator to get this accomplished. And so there's a timetable for this. There's also cost savings for this. Eventually, what will happen is if this does pass and our elected officials operate on a four-year term, that means that every other year, there will be no village election, which means that there will be no cost for a village election. And there's, if you look at our budget, there's a line item in that budget for the cost for the machines, for the, we have to pay all the poll workers to actually do that. There's a cost in the clerk's office to run the election. And we're all very familiar with the lever machines, and we all know that the long, long-term for the lever machines is not, there's no certainty for that at all, actually. So the cost of running an election is at some point gonna be outside of our control, because it's gonna be run by the county. So having an election every other year certainly saves in that cost. So I took some notes and I wanted to talk a little bit about the timeline for this. So here we are tonight, it's April 13. We're opening up the discussion on this. My colleagues are gonna talk about it. Anyone from the public can actually, I'm gonna ask them to talk about this. Our next board meeting is May 11. We're gonna continue the conversation there. Hopefully, people will see this on our cable channel or or see it on our website, and we'll post it there, because we want the people to understand clearly what we're doing, so they can weigh in. Most people that we hear from, they think it's a great idea and that it should have always been that way. But who knows, maybe 1,000 people are gonna say we're crazy and we shouldn't do this. At our June 8 board meeting, we're gonna keep the conversation open and then we're gonna pass it, or we're gonna have a resolution, I shouldn't say pass it. There'll be a resolution on adopting this as becoming permanent. And what will happen at that point is it opens a 30-day window for what's called a permissive referendum filing, which means that after we pass the resolution and we've, in essence, changed policy, then there is a 30-day window for people in the community to go ahead and sign, get petitions to sign to say that they want to go ahead and rescind that resolution that we had. So if that does not occur, then this matter becomes final. So how it would work if it were adopted on the timeline that I just talked about is in next year's election, 2016, and I want counsel just to verify that I'm accurate on this. Because the research that I have is that in 2016, there would be a three-year cycle for the two trustees. Then in 2017, it would go to a four-year cycle for two trustees and whoever the next mayor would be. Then in 2018, there would be a three-year term for the judge. Then in 2019, we get into the cycle, which is a four-year term for two trustees. 2020 is the first year there's no election at all. 2021, four-year term for two trustees, one mayor and the judge. And then in 2022, no election, and then it just repeats itself. And our village attorney is nodding his head, so, okay, good. So that's what we're talking about, and is there anybody from the public who wants to weigh in on this? Any thoughts? Yes, sir?
Anthony Fiore, been in place. Is there any chance to change the election from March to November? Is there any talk of that at all?
It's something that's been kicked around also. Good, it's a very good question. One of the reasons why villages have elections... One of the reasons why villages have elections in March is because the theory is that a village is a much smaller populated community than a city or a town. And we like to believe, and I do believe, that village politics and village issues are smaller, and they're local, versus if a village election is on a November ballot, let's say during a presidential election, the entire slate is swept away by maybe a very popular Republican or a Democratic candidate. And that may not necessarily be what the, you know, the residents are really looking for.
All right, just keep it in the March election, okay.
Yeah, that's, it's been kicked around an awful lot, and the whole thought process is, it's, it's really best for people who live in a small community, like a village.
Okay. Are we still keeping the old voting machines, or do we have to go electronic next year, too?
We try to keep them as long as we can, by law. We get, we've had a few extensions on that, but at a certain point in time, we will not be able to keep those.
Yeah, because I work for Lake glass, so next, this is the last year we could use the lever. Next year, the school district has to go to electronics. So they got a big line item just for that.
Yeah, that's right. You see the expense, that's right.
Okay, thanks, that was it.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this topic? And if not, any of my colleagues on the board here? Maybe I covered it all.
Actually, you covered it quite thoroughly. I'd be interested if there is a turnout from the public, and what their views are. So obviously, we'll all withhold judgment until that point. And I think, I don't know if you mentioned it, but David Burke, the administrator, did some good research, and we found out that the four-year terms are not, actually are consistent with a number of other municipalities, particularly the Town Council of Eastchester. Each of the council members is on a four-year term. So it's nothing terribly radical that we're discussing here, but I'm going to hold off and see what the public says.
Very true, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I hope that we will continue this discussion. Certainly, I think with a four-year term, also included in the discussion needs to be the possibility of term limits. We haven't really discussed that too thoroughly. I, generally speaking, I'm opposed to term limits. However, if we look at the State Assembly, we look at members there, look at the State Senate, it's a bad idea whose time has come. So I'm in favor of term limits for the higher offices. Perhaps it's not necessary here on a local level, but it's certainly something I think we should discuss.
Absolutely. It's all on the table. That's why I'm glad we're finally having the big conversation about it. So that's going to bring us to our departmental reports to the board, and as we always do, the chief is saying no. Nothing from the chief. Frank, boy. Mr. Galuzzi.
Good evening, Mayor. Board. This coming Friday, the 17th, from 6:30 to 9:00, please stop by the Community Center. The Girl Scout Silver Award recital, it's called Dance for Awareness. It's brought to you by the Eastchester Girl Scout Troop 2059. They're having a benefit for Ecap. It's $10 admission, and you have to also bring a canned good. All the proceeds will go to Ecap. That's this Friday, the 17th. Next Monday, I know it's next, next month, I want to bring to everybody's attention, there may be kids watching, or parents that have some kids that are into hobbies. Saturday, May 16, from 11:00 to 5:00 at the Community Center, the Westchester Comic and Collectible Show. Admission is free. Come out and check out the video games and systems, plenty of rare comic books, magic cards, toys, and Mad magazines. So if you're interested, come on out. It's just some of the events we're doing at the Community Center in the next month or two. Also, Open Gym is still Monday, Wednesday, and Friday for all you kids listening, from 3 to 4. So come on out and enjoy the new rims, new basketball rims and nets we put up. Community Center is, is looking good in that regard. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Kudos, John. Kudos for the Easter egg hunt at Parkway Oval, by the way.
Boy, yeah.
I think it went very well.
The board, and the mayor, and all of us together. Gary, did you have anything for us?
I do.
Yes.
Well, I think this is the time that I can discuss the fast food issue.
Yes, please do.
Basically, what's happened is, there is a subway application.
Your mic.
Yeah, pull the mic.
Okay. There's a subway application in front of the zoning board right now. And what's before the zoning board is, they're seeking a variance for parking variance only. So the parking variance would be from four parking spaces. They were asking originally to go down to two, but they've actually increased that to three. So they're looking for a variance to go from four to three. So what's before the zoning boards of, not a simple application, but it's, it's very limited. It's a limited application, and they're just looking at the parking. There was a number of members of the public that came to that meeting, and were speaking out against fast food in general, which, and so what happened is, as we know, Eastchester's passed a law prohibiting fast food restaurants in their municipality. So this board's asked me to look into what Eastchester did. So what I've, I've done that, and what happens is, so Eastchester's passed a law basically prohibiting fast food and fast casual food, so they've kind of differentiated between those two things. The key with the law is, is really the legislative intent, because you can't, as a board, you can't act arbitrary and capricious. You can't just say, well, I don't like fast food. There has to be a reasoning behind your decision. And so what I did was, I wanted to kind of read what Eastchester's reasoning was in their legislative intent. It's, it's actually quite lengthy, but I'm going to just read the pertinent part, which is the meat of it, where Eastchester said, this is why we're going to prohibit fast food, okay?
Okay.
So what that is, with that, it's basically, and this is from their legislative intent to that law, it says, "To maintain and encourage diverse and vibrant commercial districts to avoid against generic and formulaic architecture and signage, to encourage local economic development and economic vitality through the support of diversity of independent businesses, and to support businesses that serve the basic needs of the community rather than those oriented towards regional shoppers and patrons." It goes on and says, "Within this context, the board finds that formula fast food and quick-serve, and formula fast casual, quick, casual restaurants, which by their very nature have standardized services, decor, methods of operation, and generic corporate-driven architecture and other features that make them virtually identical to business elsewhere." And then it just goes on. So that's, that was their reasoning behind it. I also did some other research. Some of the other municipalities basically look at the, basically what trustee Quigley was saying about the good humor was the health aspects of this. You know, we don't want this in our community because of the health reasons. So that's, could be another reason, if the board ever decides, you know, to pass a law similar to Eastchester's. And what I'll also do is, I'll go through, and Eastchester basically defined this fast food. So I'll tell you what their definition of fast food was, so we kind of know what we're talking about. So what they said is, "Formula fast food and formula quick-serve restaurants basically share a common name, trademark, or logo with seven or more restaurants in the area, region or country, that are generally characterized by the following. So number one is, food is intended to be prepared and served very quickly. Food is typically ordered at a stand-up counter, and there is minimal or no table service. Number three, payment is typically made prior to consumption. Four, the menu is typically posted over the counter, as well as a wall display, and the menu selections are general consistent, are general consistent at every location. Food is typically preheated or precooked and kept hot or reheated to order. Food is typically served to the customer in a packaged form for takeout, although tables may be provided for consumption on premises. And then number seven, which is the last one, is plates, cups, and utensils are typically disposable." So that's what Eastchester's passed, and it says, "Formula fast, quick-service restaurants are prohibited within the town of Eastchester." So that, that was their law, and that was their reasoning for passing that law. So again, subway's here for a variance between the, for the zoning board, but they are limited, they're not looking at any of this, because the law, we don't have a law prohibiting fast food.
Right.
So what they're really just looking at is, is parking variance. So I just wanted to make the members of the community aware that they, they're, the scope is very limited to what, what they're deciding.
What about Bronxville? There, I, I watched the zoning board meeting, and there was a, a couple of people made reference to Eastchester and Bronxville having restrictions.
I, I got halfway through Bronxville. I don't, I don't have a full answer to that. I've been playing phone tag with the village administrator down there. I know they've defined fast food in their, in their definition section of the code. I'm not su-- I, I just haven't been able to pinpoint where they prohibit it. So I know there's a whole bunch of districts down there, so I'm not sure if it's just a general prohibition, or if it's just specifically one area, but I'm still looking into the Bronxville.
All right, good.
I've, I've got a question on the, and I'm trying to understand the term parking variances. The locations on Main Street, parking is all metered parking there. What does it mean to have four or three parking spaces? Where are they located? Are they metered? Are they...
They're not metered. They're provided by the landlord. I think the landlord has signed a lease for those parking spaces with, I guess, DiAgostino, Robert DiAgostino had extra spots.
These are the ones on Cameron, around the corner? Or where would they, I'm just trying to figure out...
I think they're right next to the, the proposed subway. It's right, the building right next door. It's behind the building.
Okay, obviously not in Main Street.
And those parking spaces would basically be for the employees. The, the applicants come in and said he's going to have, generally between two and three employees. That's why he only really needs two or three parking spaces. So there, we haven't gotten to the planning board stage with the site plan, but I would assume that the customers would be either walking to the location, or parking on, you know, Main Street to go there. But again, we haven't gotten that far into, you know, the, how the, the operation's going to, going to go.
Okay. We're going to, we're going to stay on this, and you're going to have a little more information for us next month, too?
Sure, I'll, you know, nail down Bronxville and see what other communities are doing.
Actually, just one last question. Say, if we did pass some sort of a fast food law, that certainly is not going to apply to the subway application at this point, would it? If we, if we passed a law to ban it, which, which, you know, given the process, wouldn't come any earlier than, say, probably September, October of this year. In the meantime, the subway just has to clear the variances and the parking, and it's ready to open up.
They'd have to go through Planning Board, the site plan, too.
Okay, so we pass the law in October, then what happens to the subway? Assuming it goes in.
They're open and operating.
They're in.
Yeah, well, right, they're not closing. We're talking about future applications.
That's correct. That's correct.
If, if, if you would, Gary, talk a little bit about, I know you did, but this is something I really want to know about, which is the permissive causes, so to speak, or the permissive rationale that a village in or town can have for this banning, and the non-permissive rationale, or the arbitrary...
Arbitrary and capricious is what you cannot act. You, you can't...
And what is the court found to be arbitrary and capric-- if we don't, we don't like fast food, that's arbitrary and capricious.
That's arbitrary and capricious. So it's going to be a case by case.
So we have to say, we don't like fast food because...
Correct, because, and there has to be valid reasons, and it's going to vary, because each community's going to be different. So we're going to have to look at our community and say, you know, X, Y, Z, and might be different than another community, but it just can't be arbitrary and capricious. There has to be some rationale behind your decision, and, and why you'd be against fast food as defined, you know, as defined as, as an Eastchester, or whatever you want it defined it as.
Thank you, Gary.
I was just going to say, maybe for some clarification, for mine and Gary's edification, is that we need some direction from the board of the reasoning. Are you looking to get rid of fast food, or do you not want chains in Tocco? Do you not want the certain characters of certain buildings? Exactly, I guess maybe that's what we're trying to get, is your legislative intent, and what we're trying to do in Tocco, exactly, for our community, and what's best for our community. So that's what we're trying to pull out of you, so we can craft a piece of legislation that's for us.
You know, it's difficult to say, and the reason why I say that is because we also had a town hall meeting on this, and it was interesting. I, I thought an awful lot after that meeting. You know, there were some people there who said, hey, we hate subway, we think it's going to bring in certain type of people, or whatever. I don't know what the logic was there. And then one of the residents brought up a point about the Panera Bread issue up on White Plains. And he said, although, you know, I kind of like Panera Bread. So I started thinking about it. I was like, all right, well, if I'm a legislator here, you know, where does my discrimination start and stop, you know? Hey, I like Subway, or I hate McDonald's. I mean, so it's, it's very difficult. I guess we really need to, for the first time, we're looking at them in groups, in clusters. This is a fast food-type business, these are franchises, then you get into the whole, well, is it, I've heard on both sides, well, it's a franchise. Yeah, but the franchise is owned by Greg Luise, and he lives in Tocco, and he's a nice guy, you know? He's raising a family here, and he owns that Denny's restaurant, that Denny's franchise that's in Tocco. So if I, you know, now do I say, well, hey, I don't want any Denny's, but I just kind of killed his whole, you know, lifelong plan of opening a, an IHOP right on Marlborough Road, or something like that? So it's, it's a big, it's a big conversation. I think that, from my standpoint, I don't really have an answer to your question right now.
And I believe, Mr. Mayor, just to piggyback with what you said, I believe the applicant is a Tocco, I know he's a Tocco high school graduate. I don't know if he's living here now.
Subway guy? The guy who owns the subway, yeah?
And I, and I know that the, the public that attended the zoning board meeting, that was expressing their displeasure with the subway, was advised by members of the zoning board that they had to present their argument to this village board.
That's correct.
And so, to answer your question, David, is, they're not here, so I don't feel it's an issue right now.
Right.
I mean, I have a statement prepared that I wanted to read, but there's nobody here, so, you know, I'll be, but seeing as I did it, I mean, I'm going to mention some of the points, because I know there's people watching on TV, so...
Well, actually, on this topic, since Gary opened it up, I'll ask, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on this food, fast food issue? Anybody here? Okay, good. So now is probably a very appropriate time to bring you in.
So, what, and Mayor, if I may, we, we all received, this board received a communication from a resident from the Parkview Heights Civic Association, and I'm just going to read some of the highlights of what she wrote to us. "Tax revenue. You will sacrifice current revenue for short-term gains since you will be, since you will inevitably lose some of the smaller shops. Two, village character and identity will be lost as each small mom-and-pop shop closes. Our village character's identity helps to keep property values up. Three, town ordinance prohibits fast casual food shops," and she references Eastchester. "Traffic will increase. Forty-five thousand vehicles per week pass along Main Street." And then number five, moratorium on subway application and similar applications. And I wrote back on behalf of the board that this was a worthy of discussion. Please attend this meeting, and let's have this discussion. But no one's here, so I have a little something that I want to say. Comments like, subway is not classy, and this has already been said, but I'm going to go on record as saying it. When a man dressed as the Statue of Liberty is hawking income tax business on the corner, and that draws no public outcry, that causes me to take a step back and question, what is the real issue at hand? When I leave my house on Armour Villa to walk up Lake Avenue, and I pass two nail salons, one spa, and two hairdressers on the same block, and the only separation is a parking lot, I wonder, why is there no concern for the sustainability of these businesses by the public, like they have with the subway application? have with the subway application? The question becomes even more pressing when I turn the corner on Main Street and I count two more hair salons and two more nail salons on Main Street between Columbus and Fairview Avenues. Then, as the mayor's just said, when a resident in a meeting says, "I support a Panera Bread," I question, well, why is that acceptable but subway's not? How much will this subway affect surrounding similar businesses? This was brought up at the zoning board meeting. Will it help to complement the businesses at Vlogio's or Cafe 72? Neither of these establishments offer a deli sandwich, so my initial reaction is, yes. Did the opening of Starbucks cause any local businesses to go out of business? Should I infringe, or this board infringe on free enterprise in Tocco by supporting a law against Tocco, against subway, I'm sorry? Or should I allow people to make their own choices as to what food establishment they wish to patronize? Should I support a law that would allow a vacant store to sit empty instead of receiving sales tax revenue that would benefit the village? How many fast food establishments would open in Tocco, and where would they set up shop? Would we become the new fast food mecca of Southern Westchester? Today, I mean, and this is a random thought, I was standing in front of the post office, the abundance of parking at 3:00 in the afternoon on Main Street and Columbus Avenue was impressive. What was also impressive was the line of traffic that stretched from Columbus Avenue all the way up past Fairview. And in my conversation with this local business owner, I said, you know, I was thinking to myself, let me see how many of these cars are going to pull over and go to Vlogio's or Cafe 72. Well, needless to say, that did not happen. So I guess I'm starting to get to, is it wise for us, Tocco, to plant its feet in the ground and not permit an established franchise to operate in the village? If the Marriott Hotel wants to open a franchise steakhouse on their premises, would it be sensible for this board to prohibit such an operation? All I'm trying to say here tonight is, this is a, and Steve, trustee Alfassi said this, as well as my other colleagues, we need to discuss this. But, and I'm going to say this a million times, we need to keep an open mind and not let our unfounded fears run this conversation. We have to do this in an objective manner to achieve a goal, whatever that goal might be. Thank you.
That's well said. Don't let the unfounded fears dictate and run the whole conversation. You're 100% right there.
Thank you.
Just briefly, Mayor, my direction to the, David Burke and to Gary Gertsen is, don't do anything right now. I agree very much with--
Let's hear that.
With what trust--
No, not in this--
At the risk of sounding like my Republican colleagues, I agree, Mr. Luise, that this is competition and survival of the fittest. This is what built the country, and I think that this is a matter of, we should not be in a position as a governmental body stifling honest, fair competition. So, you know, at this point, I'm certainly open to discussion. If people in the public come in any subsequent meetings to talk about it, I'm certainly going to listen to them. But right now, I'm fine with just leaving things as they are.
I think the one element that I'm really curious about is the Bronxville law, because if we happen to be in this little vacuum here between Bronxville and the town, you know, we may want to just take a look and see, is there something, I'm not saying that we're going to radically change anything, but if, I don't know, I just want to see if we just happen to be kind of, you know, fair game to everything, and maybe there's some level of restriction that we may want to put in place. I don't, I have no idea what that would be, but I want to see what Bronxville, I've looked at Eastchester, and I think they did a good job when they crafted that to specifically take care of their issue that they had at that time. And that may very well change, too. There may be a different mindset of the board, and they could change that as well. But I think, I'd like to see what Bronxville, what they have on their books.
Now, another thing that, you know, that we discussed in our work session is, you know, as I mentioned, the nail salons. Should we look at, and I throw this out there for discussion again, should we say that only certain X amount of businesses, a similar type of business can only operate within a certain radius? But it's free enterprise. This guy might be a better nail cutter than the guy down the block. It's not for me to say. I'm not the one investing the money. I wish them all the success in the world. And obviously, they're doing well because they're still here. And then, I didn't even get past Fairview, there's another hair salon. So, I mean, think of how many hair salons. And of course, as we all know, I know you're getting ready to say it, I won the three raffles for the hair salon, so.
You know, it's also important to recognize, too, that somebody, they buy a building and they put a million dollars and are renovating it, and then, you know, we turn around and say, "Oh, guess what? You know what? We don't want you to have any food establishments in there. We're going to curtail and, you know, put restrictions on it." So what do we do? You know, we took somebody, we took an old, derelict building that somebody improved, set it up for a good tenant, and now we're handcuffing and restricting his opportunity to go ahead and generate some income, which he obviously needs to do to pay for those repairs that he put on the building, which keeps our community looking fresh and vibrant. So it's, there's a lot of different forks to this, no pun intended, prongs to the fork to this conversation. So, and as I will agree with my Democratic counterpart here, free enterprise is a very good thing. You know, I own a small business, a small scaffolding business, and, you know, I go back to when I first started in business, there was, believe it or not, there was maybe 10 scaffolding businesses in the New York area, and now there's 200. And yet, I'm still in business today. Is that because we do a good job? I want to think so. And there's a lot of people that I've seen who opened and closed. Is it because they didn't do a good job? I would imagine so. So that's just, that's the way it works. So.
You know, piggybacking on that thought, Mr. Mayor, for those who might not like a franchise to be open, whether that's Subway's, whether that's McDonald's, whether Burger King, or any other franchise that you might think of, there's always the great power of the purse, or the lack thereof, meaning if you don't want it, don't patronize it. I don't know that, in any business, no business can survive if they don't have customers. I think that's enough said.
Yep, very true. Well, that'll bring us to our last department head, which is our village administrator, David Burke. Was there anything else? I know we heard a lot from you tonight.
Yeah, maybe I'll just be really brief, because even though we had a lot of discussion on a lot of different items tonight, I took up most of my month, some of these personnel issues, and, you know, we're still in the budget season. But maybe I just want to piggyback off the, we're looking for the public feedback on some of these issues in regards to the term changes and some of this fast food stuff. And I'd be happy to disseminate the information to the board. If people want to email me, some people can't make it to the board meeting. Some people just want to say something. If you want to email me, the public wants to email me, and I'll give it to the whole board. Obviously, your emails are online. Anyone can email you directly, but if they just want to send it to me, we're always looking for feedback from the public.
Thank you. Brings us to miscellaneous business, which is our next village board meeting, is going to be on April 27th, which will be the special budget adoption meeting as well. May 6th, 2015, we have a residence meeting down at Parkway Oval, and that is going to bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports, and we're going to start with trustee quickly.
Thank you, Mayor. You might not know, but we are in the midst of National Library Week. Began yesterday, continues through the end of this week. Just a couple of, some I think, really interesting events coming up. On Thursday, this coming Thursday, April 16th, Gloria Goldreich, who wrote the book called The Bridle Chair, will be at the library, so you can just meet the author, book discussion and signing. That'll be April 16th at 2:00. Books and Coffee, you heard that mentioned earlier during some of the discussion about the library and the budget. That's Wednesday, April 22nd at 11:00 a.m. Living Successfully While Maintaining Your Mental Health, as we program, presented by Sharon McCarthy of the National Alliance on Mental Illness. That'll be Friday, May 1st at 2:00 p.m. And something very timely with the spring coming on finally, Growing and Cooking with Fresh Herbs. It'll be a presentation, How to Grow Your Own Herbs, by an expert from the Spring Brook Nursery, Wednesday, May 20th, 6:30 p.m. You'll come home with your own herb seeds. There'll be a small materials fee, but a great way to get your summer garden going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Luise.
I promise to keep this short, Mayor. The Tocco seniors will have a visit tomorrow at the Father Fata Hall by historian David Osborne from the St. Paul's Church National Historic Site, who will discuss World War I with the seniors. Then on April 16th, this Thursday, they will be traveling up to the Westchester Broadway Theater to take in the West Side Story as well as dinner. The Calligraphy Program is in full swing and is doing quite well. It's a new program that was initiated by Jennifer Vetromile, and they are now are also undertaking a new program, thanks to the generous donation of a Keller Williams. They are offering additional classes in line dancing and Tai Chi. And I'd like to once again remind everyone that the seniors are, the Tocco seniors are one of the, are the oldest organization in Westchester County, as well as the Senior Council, who this year will be celebrating their 45th anniversary, and they will be doing this on June 18th up at the newly refurbished Lake Isle. I'll have more information for you at next month's meeting. Moving on to the Tocco History Committee, they are now undertaking a new recording process, and by that I mean they are interviewing the three business owners that survived urban renewal here in Tocco. So they are going to be doing recorded audio histories with the owners of Tocco Paint and Glass, Roma's Restaurant, and the owner of Epstein's. It will be interesting to have this recorded describing their growth and success here in the village. And of course, once these, this project is completed, it will be available for everyone to come in and enjoy. As always, they welcome all residents to come and visit them on Wednesday, when they are here on the second floor in Village Hall from the hours of 9:00 a.m. until noon. And that's all I have, Mayor.
That will be a neat interview.
Yeah.
Yes. Trustee Alfassi.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
And same with me. Nothing at all. We covered a lot of ground tonight. Thank you for your patience. I don't think we've had a meeting this long in quite a while. So that's going to bring me to the second opportunity to address the board. Anybody want to talk about anything at all? And if there's no other business tonight, I will ask for a-- Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Sorry. Mr. Ringwald.
Didn't mean to cut you off. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I was a little late getting up. Tom Ringwald, 6 Hollywood Avenue. Question about signage. I had written a note to the village administrator, and I got a response. Quite frankly, I don't recall. When the board is going to meet about signage, in particular, I'm talking about neon signs. You have a new place on Main Street, a nail salon. I went in to patronize them, and the lady said, "It was a long time to open," yada, 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 "and she'd love to put a neon sign up, but she's not allowed to." As we look across the street, directly in front of us is a neon sign that says, "Open." As I walked into Village Hall tonight, above Chase Bank, there is a neon sign flashing in my face on the end of, over by the Pyramid Racquet Ball Place. There's a building. Both levels have neon signs in the window. My question is this, if there's an ordinance, why is it not enforced? Why does it seem to be that it's selective, and the new tenant can't put a sign up, but right across the street, they have a sign up?
I think the first question would be, what is the rule? And I'm going to ask Gary, who is, from my recollection on this, is that a neon sign was allowed if it is back inside your business a certain distance. You can't have a neon sign up against your front window.
That's correct.
Gary's scanning through there. Right. And we have to give him, we have to cut him some slack.
It may take me a while to look at the code, but I had dealt with this in the court one time, because I remember we did give somebody a violation for a neon sign, and I believe that was correct, that if the sign was set back, the neon was okay. But I haven't dealt with that in probably 10 years. But I'll have to go through that and--
That's okay. But I think the second part is, there's really no selective enforcement. We don't tell, of course, our code enforcement or building inspector, "Hey, go ahead and give this person a violation and this person not." It's more of, when it's brought to the attention of that department, then they'll actually prepare a ticket and they'll actually go on, or, not a ticket, it's a form, and then they'll go out and actually do an inspection on it. So if you have an issue, you can, you know Bill now, since you're on the zoning board, just let him know, and he'll go ahead and address it with them. But, look, the law's the law. And if we, as a board, we decide that we want to go ahead and change that law and let everyone put neon signs right up against the plate glass window, then that's something that we'll address and take up, but--
Opposed?
Yeah, I know. I figured that, too. So, but, so I guess, two parts is exactly what are they allowed to do? And I know neon is allowed inside the business. I'm not sure how far back. And in terms of if somebody does have it up against the window, then we're going to have to take action on that.
Well, interestingly enough, this was brought to my attention a while back by a store owner on Main Street. Same, "Why can't I have my neon sign when the store on the corner of Fairview has the New York State Lottery sign?" Well, lo and behold, New York state law supersedes village law, and they have to have, if they sell lottery tickets, correct me if I'm wrong, my crack legal team over here, that they are obligated to have that sign in the window when they sell lottery tickets. And it wasn't a satisfying answer for her, but, you know, why can they have one? Why can't I have one? So it's the difference.
Our village attorney, well, within a day or two, he'll send us all a memo on that exact point. So, thank you. Thank you for bringing our attention. But David's chomping--
Sure. I just wanted to--
Skated on the fast food, but now you got the neon signs.
In regards to the neon signs, and I did have an email conversation with Mr. Ringwald about this. It's a couple of things where we're going to, we were looking for direction from the village board on some of this stuff, because it was, should we be enforcing it closely? Should we not be enforcing it very closely? It is on our agenda to talk with Mr. Trustee Alfassi on his, kind of his zoning issues, where we would then kind of look at it more closely to see if this is the direction the board really wants to go in. The Sign and Owning Board has actually also been looking at the Sign and Owning Code to do some revisions to that, and it was also waiting on that, those revisions to come in. Obviously, those would go to the board. If you guys want to do any of those modifications, but at that time, I thought maybe it would be appropriate to bring that topic up to get clear direction on some of these neon signs.
And it's good to bunch them all together, because there's a cost. And anytime we go ahead and make a change to our village code, there's a pretty good cost, and it's ridiculous, the, well, the public notice, I get that, you know, the notice in the paper, but then the printing and all the pages that we have to print for the big manual, that big book, and then you have to have them available for anyone who wants to come in to the clerk's office. So I know there's an expense to actually make a change in our village ordinance. So it's good to not do it every week or every month. It's good to kind of bunch some of these issues together.
And it's true. If the Sign and Owning was going to look at everything about signs and make some of those changes, let's just do them all at once. Let's figure out what we don't want to do and what we do want to do.
What else are they looking at besides--
Well, another thing we had been talking about is the temporary banners and by for-profit businesses, and that's something that I've worked on some legislation, and we're going to get around to discussing that as well.
Yeah.
Well, anybody else? It's been a high-spirited meeting tonight. Thank you all very much. If there is no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Till next time, Tocco. Have a very good evening. Have a very good evening.